To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Did Ricky take over the meeting and it's raining like crazy?
I brought the rain. Brought rains.
A couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, a month ago. Alrighty, um, well, it's eight, after eight thirty, it's called the meeting to order. Uh, we have three things that we need to amend the agenda with. One is, uh, at eight forty-five, Ben Lutz will discuss possible action on a tile crossing policy. And then down at the bottom, we're gonna add a couple drainage things. Uh, DD ten, approval of pay estimate number one to Peterson Escavation for forty thousand five hundred dollars. I believe that's probably for District Ten.
Forty thousand five hundred?
Yeah. And then, uh, we're gonna have discussion on DD twenty-nine. There'll be no action taken, just discussion on that. And then with those three amendments, I'd look for an approval for our motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the amended agenda, that's David.
A first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, approve the amendments from eight thirty-one.
We'll find a means I'll make that motion for three minutes.
I have a first, can you get a second?
Second.
Second from Dave, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. General public concerns. We don't have anyone here and we'll move on to Todd Lee, his update source.
Yeah, I do. Um, I was here a couple of weeks ago, had a whole agenda, a packed house. So I kinda glossed over, I guess, uh, the dam project or really just hit the high points. I feel like we did a very good job of explaining to you where we were at on that project. It's major, I mean, it's, it's a high dollar ticket item, so I definitely think you guys need to be maybe brought up to speed as far as where we're at or where we would like to go from here. Um, so I guess I'll start with, been working on this about a year and I guess some of you are probably aware, but I just wanna make sure everyone's on the same page. Contacted the DNR, um, looking for some guidance as far as how to proceed. Got hooked up with Mimi Wagner, which I know a couple of you have met me. She has acted as a facilitator to try and keep this process moving forward, to kinda coach us through it as far as, and maybe, I'll backtrack. This has been a, kind of a, an elephant in the room for, I mean, I have stuff in my office from the early two thousands, and it's something you talk about doing, or something needs to be done with the dam for Bruce, how long?
Long time.
Long time. There's been quite a few failed attempts, so this time I thought, well, I'll have somebody, a professional, try to coach you through it, so maybe we'll have better luck this time. Mimi did some interviews with, uh, interested people, people that had a best interest in the river. She had completed those and we were just at the point where we were going to, uh, have a public meeting, kinda give the public the opportunity to give some feedback and commit it. So we decided to step back, um, take our foot off the gas pedal, I guess. Had kinda been in limbo. In the meantime, we did decide to move forward on a hydrological study. Purpose of that was to, I guess, honestly, look at the floodplain above the dam and also study the effects of, if you take a foot of the elevation off that dam, what does it do upstream when the river comes up? If you take two foot off the elevation, what does it do upstream? With that data, depending upon how you choose to move forward, that potentially could open up FEMA grants as far as a flood mitigation project because of the homes that are above the dam. So we did move forward on that. I have not heard back from that. Um, should be getting those results shortly. So that's where we're at. I heard you guys were gonna bond. Travis Getkin encouraged me to come and talk to you a little bit about getting some money to kinda keep things moving. So I did. We're at the point now where we need to, uh, basically pick three or four options, where your best three or four options. Get an engineer to do a, kind of a sketch as far as what each option would look like and a cost associated with each of those options. And then get, uh, probably the Conservation Board, probably City Council of Humboldt and this group together and decide which one do we wanna move forward with. And at that point, the DNR has money that you can apply for to get the engineering costs for plans and specs paid for by them. Cost on the, the concept is probably twenty-five to thirty thousand for the three, three ideas, the sketches, the, the estimates. So if you did decide to fund with that five hundred thousand, I would use some of that for that to keep things moving forward. At that point, you would, depending upon which plan you wanted to go forward with, it really depends on which, which grants or what money is out there. I mean, if you decided you wanted to dredge, there's not that much as far as grant funding for that. If you wanted to, you know, do something else, there's this group of grants that you could apply for, for that. At that point, you would, uh, put things up for bids and then you could kinda go from there. So, um, I guess I understand maybe there's a lot of uncertainty now with the whole COVID thing. If this isn't the best time to move forward or if that's your feeling, I get it, I, I do. But I will say that at some point, I think that it is a good project, worthwhile, is definitely worth pursuing. That river is a, it's an untapped recreational resource for this community, I really believe that. And if you did something with that and made some good choices, Humboldt could be a, a regional recreational destination point. People would wanna come here and visit, hang out, spend their money, um, especially when you tie it in with what we have going with the trails, tie it in with what we have going at Sheldon and even at Gosh. You know, you can come here, camp, float the river, have a good time.
On a rainy day, we've got the big rec center.
Yep, and, yep, you nailed it, Rick. Um, you know, in this day and age, young people look for these quality of life amenities when they're deciding where they wanna live, where they wanna work. Even like if you talk to Alyssa O'Connor, companies that are looking to locate here, look at these quality of life things. It is important, even if there's not, you know, there's, as far as the hard dollars and cents, you're not gonna get the money back from user fees, you're not gonna charge people to float the river, you know, you're just not. But if that attracts a business, what's that worth? You attract people to camp at Sheldon, I know Iowa State did a study in two thousand twelve, that the average camper will spend fifty-nine dollars a day in the local community. And if that takes off, that adds up in a hurry. And I guess the last thing I wanna mention, well, I guess maybe I'll back up, I mean, obviously, our, even our local businesses are kinda struggling to find workers. If you look in the reminder, there's ads held throughout and even with your HR background, when people are looking at where do I wanna live, where do I wanna work, they do look at these quality of life things.
When I was hiring for engineers, I mean, they'd get up, you know, I would always recommend them to look at the Humboldt website and things like that. They wanna know what's going on and I would send them that information and some were positive. I always brought up the river, so I said, we have a lot of recreational, but there's other things that go along with it. The rec center has helped. That's a big thing with the younger.
So when you look at the big picture and we have these recreational opportunities, you've got a great school system and a just a really nice quality community, it's, it's a pretty attractive place to be. So an investment in the dam, the dam area, improving that would, I think, benefit Humboldt and the Humboldt community as, as a whole. Last thing, the dam is a, it is a drowning hazard. I mean, there's no two ways around it. It, it's, it's a proven fact. We've been fortunate in that I believe there's only two known deaths over the last seventy years or whatever. But the last thing that I wanna do is to have to look the mom, the dad, family member of the next victim in the eye and say, "We just couldn't come to an agreement, we just couldn't find the money to, to take care of this problem that, that we knew was there." And I know it's expensive and I know it's tough and it's never the right time, but at some point, even if it's not right now, I would like to move forward on this and, and make some improvements there. So, that's what I have, that's the update. I guess I'll just ask you guys, where, where are you at on this? Is this a priority for you? Um, do you have questions for me? And if it's not, that's, that's fine, I would appreciate you being honest with me. Cause if you're not, if you're not on board, this isn't gonna move forward, you know, honestly, cause the money needs to come from this group. So if that's the case, then I'll devote my time and attention to other things, I won't waste my time on this anymore, so.
Be decided, I'm chairman today, I'm gonna be last. I'll let George on the table.
Well, I don't really wanna be first because I live there.
I'll be first, I don't care, I'll be first. As, as, trying to hire people for, in the past and everything, um, we need to do whatever we can to spotlight Humboldt and, and to help it to grow. We have a great community here and, um, I would hate to see us just kinda sit back and not do whatever we could to help it grow. And I think, um, this is a great thing. We look at Charles City, what it's done up there with the things that they've got going on up there. So I think if we can do this and do it the right way, be, like you said, give the updates, be upfront with everybody around and keep everybody encouraged, um, I think it really could be a good thing and I think it could actually grow our community and bring people in, cause that's what we're looking for, we're looking to, to build our community.
Yep, yeah, I don't know if you've gotten feedback, but the feedback that I've gotten has been mostly positive. Again, I know in the past it's been a very divisive, very hot button topic, but I haven't really gotten the, the anger or the...
Negativity.
Yeah, the negativity this time around for whatever reason. Maybe, I don't know, have you or anyone else gotten that?
Are you proposing something similar to Charles City or are you just talking about taking a split or two out?
At this point, all options are open. We have not decided on anything.
Right. At one time, Todd, they, we had that group put together and they talked about doing something similar to Charles City and then when it went from the planning stage to the river stage, it then went to the mill race.
Yep.
Which is as wide as this room. And it's like, how are you gonna get people to come here to float down the mill race? Um, about six blocks when that wasn't the plan? So it just kinda went off. All weekend, I mean, with the weather the way it was, hot, beautiful weather, the river was low, it's hardly moving, but there was still, I'd hate to count the amount of kayakers out there, um, people in canoes, even some small fishing. When I grew up, there was all hands, they used to water ski on that thing from Friday afternoon, as early as people could get off work, to Sunday night, an hour after they should've been out on the river.
Moving all the way up to the bridge.
Yeah. And it was just a hot recreation area. And we sat in my backyard this weekend and you'd hear people, you'd turn and they were canoeing or they were kayaking or, and fishing. There was more fishing than I'd seen in a long time. So there are people out there using and, you know, it's, once you have the kayak or the ability to rent it, it's pretty cheap entertainment for us.
Yep, anyone can afford to do the kayak thing, honestly.
I don't know if I could get into one, but I sure thought it looked like...
And again, for the record, I'm not saying that that is what we will do or what we would do. Ideally, you would still be able to do the boating thing, water skiing thing. My hesitation with that is the price tag that's, that's attached with that option.
That, that old strategy.
At, at that point, does it just become too expensive?
Well, I think the other thing we have to put a handle on is we have to stop the amount of wa, of mud that's making our silt that's getting from farmland into the river and, cause if you pull the dirt that's up around the dam, that thing will just slide down and the next, and it just keeps doing that. So we have to be able to get some type of buffer zone so that the dirt can't get into that river area.
Yep. Yeah, if you dredged it and didn't change things in the watershed stream, it wouldn't last very long, it would be, you would waste your money.
And a long time ago, we used to go along there and, and pull the trees that were, you know, coming down the river and we'd pull them up there by the, the, uh, what, what used to be the loading area.
Yep.
And people would cut those trees up and, and, you know, there's a lot of people that used it, so there was a lot of people that helped do it.
Yep.
And it is a beautiful area, I think you have the ability to make it, and I'm, I'd live before, I, but I have to, cause I live there, so I have to, I don't want people to think I'm shoving this down their throat, I'm, I'm on board, I, I'd love to see them.
From the seventies and eighties, nineties, you could water ski clear up to, behind Fred Alston's up there, Johnson's, before you hit the rapids, you know, now you can't go anywhere. You can't even put in at Humboldt, shallow run or well run at Sheldon, but you don't go very far. So it's, when they opened the, the, the gates up there at Rutland, all that silt come down here. Let's open the gates here and let it go on down, there's nothing to stop it, go Sailorville.
Yep.
There's no dams or nothing between here and Sailorville, so.
The next barrier.
Yes.
You're right.
Let's let it flush on down and open it back up for recreation.
We could look at doing some gate rehab as a part of the, the plan.
Well, the last time they let us move one of the gates, they opened it and a big tree got lost and then we had a mess, we couldn't get it open or closed, so that was part, and we used to put, we used to put the boards on.
We did.
And that was always an interesting fatter, he'd be like, standing on top of that dam and putting in things that's just too cold and then things that'd go down, well, you wanna, you wanna make sure your fingers and toes were away from that, cause when it comes down, it just, and it, it would take your fingers off, so you had...
Didn't want the county's liability insurance guy to drag my weight.
No, yeah, but we, we did that for years.
Yes.
And then it took a while to park the, you could just see the water coming up and it would help.
Well, my parents moved in ninety-one to here and there, that first house past the dam. And we used to paddle boat, we used to take the fishing boat out and it was amazing. And then it just, as time came on, then it just kept silting in there and everything. Now you couldn't get a paddle boat out there to, you know, you can't canoe or kayak.
At times.
But, but we're not gonna get a, you know, my mom went every day on the river.
Well, I'm last, I guess. Of course, everybody got their mail this last week or two and got your taxes.
Yep.
And that's, that's the sore subject.
Yep.
And here we are asking for more money.
Yep. And that's where I say I get it, Rick, I do.
But if you look at this five hundred thousand over ten years, it's somewhere between five to six dollars per person per year to do something with this problem we have. Uh, if you look at it that way, it doesn't sound like much money, if you can get matching funds. If we don't have this pool of money, you don't get matching funds or twenty-five, seventy-five percent cost share.
No matter what grant you get, there will be a local match.
Yeah, we gotta have something, yes. Um, that's, that's the hard part, cause you know, taxes just keep going up and, and our taxing did go up, but our valuations went up a lot, that is why people seem to increase. And the valuations, it's because people are buying houses like crazy.
But if you don't do something, you're gonna have to go somewhere else to do that same activity, whether it's to down to Boone to that area down there along the same river that goes right by us.
Mm-hmm. And it would be different if we were a large community and had lots of people to spread that out, but we're a smaller community and that.
Then it gets to be a harder hit.
Yep.
But I've talked, I grew up with people I see, of course, you don't get to see too many people these days, but whoever I talk to, I've asked them, "What do you think of this dam deal? Maybe we should spend money on it?" And everyone I've talked to says, "I don't like the taxes, but we gotta do something." Because it's not, and timing, money doesn't get any cheaper than this.
Yeah, that's another reason why I approached you when, when I did.
Interest rates.
Looking at it from the business side, it's a good time to do it, because not only is money cheap, contractors are hungry. People out there are hungry for work, cause from what I hear from the business community, so much of this COVID stuff has slowed things down so much that these big contractors are running out of work, cause people weren't having meetings, getting things pushed through the systems.
Oh, I get you.
You know, so I, I think it's a good opportunity to have this go forward.
Okay.
And that, that's how I feel.
Okay. That's what I needed to know, I guess, I'll just, so where's the bond issue? How does that progress from here, Peggy? Maybe that's a question for you.
We have our public hearing on the fifteenth and then things will progress after that.
Okay. So you would anticipate we have money in the asking or are you, or are you thinking they're still gonna discuss that, talk about that?
I am still gonna be visiting the people, but...
Okay, yep.
Maybe my phone will ring off the wall after we're...
Yeah, which maybe, yeah, yeah, which, at least then you'll know what the public's feeling and be that good or bad, I guess.
Yeah.
You'll have a better handle on public opinion at that point, right?
It's, it's similar to when Ben comes in and asks, "I need three motor patrols," you know, three hundred thousand, whatever the dollars are. We all look at each other like, well, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna last for a certain amount of time, well, we don't like to spend six hundred thousand or nine hundred thou, whatever the number is, but if you don't keep updating your equipment, well, it's the same thing there. We haven't put hardly anything in that.
For a long time.
Ever.
Yeah.
Most of our lives.
Owners of that dam, you're obligated to at least take care of it.
Me too.
Yes, yep, I'm sorry, but that is the reality.
Well, and my daughter was writing a paper over the weekend and she was sitting in the backyard and people were going by in kayaks and whatever and she looked at Sue and I and she said, "You know, some of my fondest memories growing up on this river were out in that river with the boat and sometimes thinking Deb was trying to drown us or whatever." But she started laughing, she goes, "I just really feel sad because the kid, my kids don't have that opportunity to go, you know, we, yeah, you can go down and throw rocks or whatever, but you, we don't float, we don't whatever." But those are things that, river kids, that, you know? And I, we have a beautiful opportunity with the two branches that we have. It's...
Those grandkids, Fort Dodge, they come up here too. They'll go up there by Berkhamer Bridge or...
A rotten.
Yeah.
Rotten, it's a good spot to put in and go to the...
Depending on what the current's doing, I mean, how long it takes you, a couple hours to a...
Yeah, that's, that's my feeling too, if we did make some modifications to the dam and then did a better job of promoting what we have here, I think it would mushroom, it would take off.
I do too.
Honestly.
And I'll probably get the same phone calls, are you crazy or whatever, but I'm, I'm willing to listen to, you know, there's a lot of people that are on board, so.
I think we all got the call that I got last week, and I know she called me the second time, "Bruce?" I said, "No, you got Dave again."
Well, so... So Peggy, I guess another question for you. If we do move forward, we get to the point where, hey, we pick option number three and that option is eight million dollars or whatever, I'm just picking a number out of the air.
I'd like a lot lower number than eight million.
Well, yeah, no, I'm just, sorry, it's five million, three million, two million, I don't know, whatever. And we decide as a group, we can't afford this right now and I have four hundred and fifty thousand of that five hundred thousand unspent, can I just at that point turn that back in or what are the repercussions for the county?
Ricky explained that very well last week.
Okay, I wasn't here last week, so I'm sorry.
Yeah.
But I think he, he can explain much better.
I think, I think there's a three-year, will that be done? You have three years to decide what you're gonna, to, to do something with the money.
Yep.
And I think at that point, it needs to go back and pay off the bond.
Okay.
And that's the way I understood it from Mike Muller.
Yeah, and I didn't catch that, so that's...
Okay, so if we got a plan, it was too expensive and you just decided we're not gonna act on this right now, we could turn that money back and there would be minimal costs to the county?
Yeah, well, the cost to the county, um, five hundred thousand at a little over one percent, five thousand dollars a year.
Okay.
So it'd be about sixteen thousand dollars that we invested or eighteen thousand dollars for those three years to come up with a plan.
Okay.
You know, so it isn't a lot of risk at that point.
So I just wanted to make sure that I was on the same page as far as everything is going to be.
And I, and I want, I myself would like an agreement written up that this money is gonna be spent on the dam, that, oh, we got this four hundred and fifty thousand left over, now we're gonna spend it on something else. That's not the pur, purpose of it.
Three more shelter houses or something, we wanna, I think it all should be sold out like you said.
I can agree with you, but I, I agree, there should be something in writing, yes.
You know, that, that if it isn't spent on the dam, it needs to go back to pay off the bond.
And I also think it's important that you, this group is as involved or, hopefully involved as you want to be moving forward. Hopefully it's something that interests you or, like I say, it's one of the bigger ticket items.
Well, I think your Conservation Group has done a great job with what you have with the Sheldon, with the trails, what we've done in the last few years, I think we have some improvements.
Yep, I think we're on the right path, but I just say, this is big.
It is.
So there definitely needs to be communication between Conservation Board and you and move forward and have a consensus opinion.
What was your capacity rate over the weekend, were you full?
Well, yep. You know, we made some money.
Every park?
Yes. Country school too.
Very good.
And I, yeah, not to oversell, but I, boy, if you make some good decisions there, I think Sheldon would be full most weekends throughout the summer. And when you start to do the math, your payback on that investment, it adds up quickly.
What's amazing on Thursday afternoon, how many campers you start seeing coming towards...
Yep.
It's like, well, we gotta get there Friday for, for Thursday night, because if we don't, Friday...
Yep. And some places do a, like a reservation type thing, we do first come, first served. And so you do get the benefit of people coming early and you get that extra night.
Couple extra nights, yeah.
Yep, so that's an advantage of doing it that way.
Yeah, some of them were up there last Sunday, a week ago.
Some of them paid two week maximum stay and there were quite few that did the two weeks.
They were there for two weeks and start the week before.
And I am surprised how many people who live in Humboldt will take their camper off of Sheldon and just go out there just to get away from...
Yep, and there is some of that too. And so then you, you have that fifty-nine dollars extra a day from the people that actually come from out of the area. So you're right, some of the people are local, but...
But that's nice that they can do that.
Yes, yep, they, they appreciate it, they enjoy it.
Sit with neighbors and do things out there and...
So...
Well, good.
Anyway, we're after the...
I'm willing to pay.
Actually, the rest of them have a time limit, so you can sit here all day.
Okay.
All right, well, thanks.
So anyway, thank you for your time.
Hope you're blessed. Don't wanna forget that, it's my duty. Thanks.
Well, Ben, we got you at eight forty-five.
No, you're fine.
A discussion of possible action on a tile crossing policy or a current policy. A discussion of possible action on a tile crossing policy, or a current policy, if you'd say, or is it?
So I sent an email last, I think, Monday. It included all of the information that we require for these private tile crossings. Sorry, I have to take this off. It's easier if you guys can hear me. Most of it's just an application to work in the county right of way, which is our typical policy, whether it's a utility or a private tile crossing or anything, it's just a request to be able to work in, in our right of way. We also include a copy of a fifteen hundred dollar resolution, which is what I'd say ninety-nine, hundred percent of the people go for, is just the no questions asked. We'll take fifteen hundred dollars for the tile crossing and go with that. There's also contractors' proof of insurance, a copy of the road signage agreement that they have to sign off on. We've had to do that ever since the car accident where Luft was crossing the road with a drainage tile, and the gal went around the barricades and drove into the hole. We have the contractor sign off that basically says, we have the signs available for you, but it is your responsibility to put them up and maintain them. And then we also include the DOT Iowa Drainage Law Codes, if somebody wants to pursue more than fifteen hundred dollars, which is what we've got going on right now with this private tile crossing in northwest part of the county. Bruce Hefty is trying to spearhead it, but he's not a landowner, is where we're running into the issue. To request a hearing, to request more than the fifteen hundred dollar reimbursement, there's a list of steps in the Iowa Drainage Law that says, these are the steps that you have to follow. You have to go to the auditor's office and file for a petition for a hearing.
Have to have an engineer.
Yep, have to do an engineer study. You have to turn in basically your design that shows, here's the elevation it's gonna run at at this grade, it's gonna cross the county road at this depth, you know.
And this is the size it needs to be.
Here's how many acres are gonna drain to it, this is the size it's gonna be. We've seen none of it from Bruce. I've seen an aerial photo with a pencil line through it. He's contacted Mark Kalmer from over in the Manson area. He is the contractor that's planning on doing the work. But as of last Monday, when I talked to Bruce, he didn't have any of that information. He knew roughly how deep they were gonna be when they come across the road. He knew roughly what grade it was gonna be. He knows what size, it's gonna be an eighteen inch. But beyond that, he couldn't tell me much. I talked to.
Didn't we come to some conclusion that he could not pursue this?
He, he cannot pursue this, it has to be a landowner. So I've got a call in to Brett Legbold, who is the lawyer representing some of the families, to basically talk to another property owner and find out what they're interested in doing.
Hope the landowners weren't interested in that, mind you.
The landowners have changed. Now they are interested in doing this, this private tile crossing. If you follow Drainage Law, you can request for a full reimbursement. I guess my question is, do you want to adopt something similar to what the Sioux County is, where it spells out exactly how you'll handle this? I mean, they pay whatever the cost of the material is, plus two hundred fifty dollars, which we did the rough math, our fifteen hundred that we've got right now actually pays the contractor a little bit more, unless you get into a large-sized tile. But in their language, they spell out that under a black top, if you wanna do a private tile crossing, it is bored, and county will pay seventy percent of that boring crossing cost, which gets quite expensive.
Gets expensive as hell.
I mean, it's, you know, for an eighteen inch boring underneath the highway, we're probably talking thirty thousand dollars.
And the county would probably.
Yeah.
You mean our portion?
I would say probably.
That might be our portion.
Probably about our portion.
I said, I figured it'd probably be about at least forty thousand.
Right. I mean, to do the, to do the one that was over by Bradgate, eleven sub five, I think, that you guys just did, I wanna say that crossing was forty thousand dollars. But I don't know what size that was that came under the highway.
I don't know, I can't remember either.
So. So I, that's where I'm at with, with Bruce and a private tile crossing is, they're still trying to get their stuff together. They want this tile crossing to happen yesterday, but basically, they just want the county to issue a blank check to them for the private tile crossing. And in lieu of the accident that we had south of Gosh Park here three, four weeks ago, do we really want a fifty-foot-wide gravel patch that somebody could wipe out on? Preliminary costs from Kalmer for our portion, if he were to open cut the road, was something like eight grand. But we would be hauling in all the rock to backfill and hauling away the asphalt that you would cut out. And then you'd have the cost of putting an asphalt patch back in, another five grand, you know, I mean, so you're at fifteen thousand, and you're closing the road for how long to do this?
In a few years, and now you're patching it again.
Right, because it's gonna settle. Yep. So I guess I'm looking for, for direction from the board on which way to pursue. I mean, when I talked to Brett this afternoon, do I tell him, hey, we're still good for open cutting the road? Or we're changing pace, we want it bored now, and the county will pay seventy percent of the boring? It's a lot of money. I mean, either, either way, it's a lot of money for something that doesn't necessarily benefit secondary roads. But it's following Iowa Drainage Law and the requirement of.
Drainage Law is not a rebuke thing to be. We're just like the farmer. I don't get no benefit, but yet it cost me a fortune.
Right.
So, is that right, Dave?
Well, when I read the, I read ours policy, and then I read Cassous', and I think, Cassous' policy, the way it reads, is a lot less wordy, a lot less.
Yeah, you'd understand it better.
Yeah, your understanding of what you're requiring, and I think that part of the issue that ours has is, a farmer might look at that and say, I thought it did that. I guess, and I'm not saying we throw ours out and just adopt Cassous' counties, but I think that we could possibly change our.
Yeah, interment a little bit. Change our policy so that it reads similar to Cassous' counties.
Take some of the stuff out of it that seems to be.
But what you're saying then is you think we should do borings under the black top?
I.
I can see the point of it, because my question is, I've heard this before, even when you bore, you sometimes get settling.
You do.
Right.
It, it's minimal, but you do. I mean, because you figure whatever you're boring underneath the highway has to be just a little bit larger than what you're trying to slide through there.
Yeah, but it's not like it does.
But it's not gonna settle like.
For the next ten years.
You know, I mean, we've, we've reduced a lot of that settling over the years by switching to backfilling with just rock through the highway. It settles.
A lot less.
Ten times less than it used to when we backfilled with dirt. You know, you've got some locations up by Randy Bakken's place that we're fixing, we were gonna fix today, but I think it's getting fixed tomorrow, where that thing's been patched four times since we did that in two thousand and four or five. I mean, it just continues to settle.
That's almost like a back adjustment when you go across that, you've got like three different.
Like a roller coaster, but.
Well, it sounds like it's safer to do the boring versus the cutting.
Well, it is. Boring allows the roadway to stay open. I don't know if it's still going, but for basically the last year and a half, that road's been beaten pretty hard by guys hauling rock up to Cassous' County for the windmills and up in Palo Alto. I assume that it's still a heavily traveled road, so if we were to shut that off even for three days for them to cut across, they're gonna beat up our gravel road system and try to go around it.
Then you're paying for it that way, too.
And then you're paying for the rock and maintenance that way.
You guys gotta look something in there about the width of what you could, what they cut down and what they bore too, because when they did that north of me for that big tile, it wasn't done right. It was not engineered right, and that guy wouldn't put that in either. Hopper had it straight down from the edge of the road, cut down.
You didn't go from right of way, right of way?
He just cut at the width of the road, and that guy would not do that. He wanted some shoulder left on that road.
Absolutely.
Yeah, well, it wasn't designed that way.
Okay. So we'd have to, I, I think right now, with our requirement for crossing a gravel or a paved road is that you have to use concrete from the base of the four slope to the base of the four slope, which with a twenty-two-foot road is usually about forty to forty-eight feet, depending on gravel or, or pavement.
What interest does Hefty have on?
He's a renter.
Okay, that's what I wanted.
Yeah, they're bothered to farm some of the land.
They farm some of the land.
And he's probably just spearheading it for the one.
Yeah, he's, he's always spearheading it for everybody.
For the owners.
Right.
Who probably don't live around here.
But like I said, I mean, according to code for him, he can't even be the one that physically comes in and applies for. The hearing.
For the hearing, yeah, petition.
Yep, I mean, he, he can file a petition, a landowner can file for the petition of the hearing, and at that time of the hearing, we can say, okay, well, we're gonna do it, well, we're gonna board it, and you pay seven, or we'll pay seventy percent or whatever, in lieu of an open cut. Like to do that, we'd need to get our ducks in a row. Say, we'd need to get.
We can change that percentage, too.
Right, we don't have to follow seventy, that's just what Cassous' County is following right now. I mean, our current policy says that we'll cover fifty percent of the boring up to five thousand dollars. Well.
That's nothing.
That's, you know, I mean.
I mean, we need equipment.
Well, we, we wrote that policy back in twenty seventeen, I think, maybe the beginning of twenty eighteen. Back then, boring's, at least for Harold Trask's boring, his quote was ten thousand dollars. Now the cost of boring's gone through the roof, you know, they're thirty, forty thousand dollars.
And he never did do that project, did he?
He never did do the boring, no.
I think he found out his estimate on boring was way low.
They, by the time he was ready to come back and do it after a couple of wet seasons, like you said, the, the boring cost went through the roof. But, I, I mean, to follow the code, they need to turn in a lot of information.
Well, you have to follow the code, you have an option.
And they're, they're not, they're, they're trying to circumvent that, I guess, or Bruce is trying to circumvent that.
Yeah, right. Well, my opinion is, I hate these patches on these gravel roads. Every time we have a, some, of course, things, couple of these patches, it's because they're being sinkhole in the road. Boring doesn't help that. I mean, it eliminates that because it's a steel pipe.
Right.
So that you never, ever have a problem there again. Versus, well, when they lay concrete pipe underneath, they could possibly have a problem, but very unlikely.
Right.
But.
But if the board's general opinion is that we should start boring and making mandatory that it's bored underneath the highway, I'll rewrite this policy similar to Cassous' County's and put it on the agenda for the board to approve. Or basically, is that something we'd have to do a hearing on for policy?
Policies, yeah, you can just do a regular on the agenda.
Okay.
With a resolution, the ordinance, yeah, should, yeah.
Well, this, from looks at Cassous' County, it's a manual of written policy, but then they've also got a resolution number on it. I'll talk to Doug and see how they, how they went through it.
I think we ought to combine the two. My opinion on it.
Still give them the option for.
Still give them the option, but I would say under the black top to hard surface roads, it's gotta be bored.
Okay.
If we don't. I'd go half of it.
Half of the boring cost?
That'd be my opinion.
I think they're pretty generous at seventy.
Yeah.
Very generous, especially if it's that expensive.
It's, it's gonna cost the county, and why have all the taxpayer pay for one guy, you know?
Well, I think some of the cost is to keep to the safety factor on the road.
Yeah.
So everybody does benefit from that. All right, anything else, Ben?
Uh, I've got to accept the retirement of Mike Mail, a secondary road employee effective October sixth of twenty twenty.
I make that motion with regret to accept Mike's retirement effective October sixth.
I'll second.
I have a first and second, I'm in favor.
I'm in. It's here for forty-three years.
Forty-three years.
Three years.
Motion carries. Okay, and beans, we are also here, we're talking about discussion of possible action in the Rutland shop. Next thing I know.
So we're in the process of cleaning up some of the Rutland shop. We went over a week or two ago, we got fuel barrels from there. We're gonna grab the fuel storage bunker and bring that over here this week, if weather permits. We gotta do some cleanup in the back. We've got snow fence from Bow. We've got some tile fittings, you know, just things that we've used as kind of a overflow storage. Beyond that, my future intention would be to sell the, the Rutland location. What we've done in the past is closed bids, similar to what law enforcement did for a car or a conservation did when they sold the Oxbow. Any interested party basically puts their, their name and their obligation down. And we go, we go that way, you know? The, the problem with doing an auction is if you've only got one or two guys building, and the property could go relatively cheap.
Yeah, and if you put a limit in it, then you have to pay the auctioneer, whether you sell it or not.
Right.
What are, I guess I don't, on that picture, are those lots?
So.
On the west side, do we own them?
Yes, yep. So what we've got is the equivalent of, there was eight lots and two platted city streets that obviously they never constructed.
But they still had to have one there.
And why these all didn't get, why this property didn't all get sold at the same time that all of the rest of the county's outlying shops got sold is because we didn't have the official vacation of those platted streets from the city of Rutland. Looking at this map that Bruce gave me this morning, it looks like both of those were vacated. So we would have the ability to, to do the sale. In the past, up until May, we've had renters or users of the property, emergency management rented the property for two years, I believe. Before that, law enforcement used it to store confiscated property and paperwork, whatever. And conservation used it to store equipment. But as far as I know right now, it is empty.
Yeah.
So would we have the ability to sell the two different buildings, you know, split that property?
I would probably look at just selling it all in one. Sell on all eight lots, two alleys, two buildings. I mean, they're right next to each other. They're three feet apart from each other right now, I think.
Well, now there's, on the west side, I didn't realize someone, another one to put.
Somebody else put up a building.
Private building, which is a nice building.
Yep, it's very nice. Yep, it's very nice.
Every guy's dream to have that shop that you can, when you get yelled at by your wife, you can, I'll just go out to the shop. But anyway, I had someone call me asking if we were, what we were gonna do. I said, I, you know what? We talked about it this spring. And I'll see if we can at least get the ball moving again, because it's empty.
Yep.
That we know of, and it is.
Empty right now.
Um, for us to not use it, I think we should cut our losses and let somebody use it that needs it.
You know, I mean, like I said, me personally, I would see us sell the property and reinvest and put up a, a nice shed in Dakota City.
Yeah.
You know, or.
Way more sense.
Or extend the building that we've got, uh, east of our office. You know, I mean, that's an expandable south wall. Uh, it was designed with the intention that you could always add more bays on to that at some point. Uh, but with that, you would cut off the, the through traffic that runs to, uh, the car dealership.
Yeah. All right, well, this is something to think about. And maybe we'll hear from other members in the county who think we should keep it and use it for something else. Maybe there's needs out there from other departments that think they need it. Okay, just transfer.
So I'm assuming that, that propane tank that's sitting on the east right behind that bunker, is that for that clay block building?
That's for the clay block building. Uh, I think it's sitting at forty percent right now. To my knowledge, that one was heated, the tin shed was not. I know Kruger mentioned that he had some mold issues.
Yeah, yeah, he had a vehicle in there at one time, and they never had any heat in there. And then when they come to pull the vehicle out, it was just a big fuzzball.
Right, which if you've got no air movement, you never open the doors, you're gonna have.
It's a block building, it sweats.
Yep. I mean, there's ceiling fans in there that they could have turned on that would have eliminated that problem, too, just getting air circulate in there.
Well, I guess I'm.
Yeah, something needs to be done.
Moving along.
We use it or sell it, but something, we should have more conversation on it.
Okay.
So.
I have a question for you, Ben. Um, and I told the person that asked me in church Sunday, the old dump, they're trimming trees. And wanted to know if they could haul their own trees out there. I said, I doubt it.
The old dump?
Well, the.
So we talk.
The new, the new.
The new one, that's the cities pile.
Well, that's what he, he said rather than take it down there, dump it off. I said, well, the problem we have, it's just like out of the composts, where you get out there and all you have a plastic bag of garbage and it gets thrown in because they don't.
We don't want that going on because the city has a permit with the DNR to do that.
To do that, yep.
And they monitor that very closely.
Well, I figured that.
We go up, we go up and measure it and have to fill out a report as to how big it is and, yeah, so we don't want that.
Well, he was gonna turn.
Everything that's gotta be cut and hauled out there has to be burnt in twenty-four hours or if they start it this morning, it's gotta be done by dark tonight. You can't have it smoldering overnight.
And the one down at the city, behind the city shed, they have to be under six inches.
Yep.
So I said, that's kind of the best avenue for us, but I will ask. I'm pretty sure I know the answer.
Not only, I mean, the, the gate is supposed to be locked. I know in most of those reports, they say that the gate is open.
Right.
But, uh.
What I told him.
It's supposed to be locked, I think, the city.
Residents cannot haul brush out there.
Right.
Because the city, the city has a permit with the DNR to do that. And like I said, they monitor that very closely.
Yeah. Well, all cities take turns. Go to city one time, they'll go out and burn. Next time, they won't go out and burn. They just pile it until they get a pile.
Yeah. All right. Um, Dave is here. So I think we're gonna go into drainage. I'm gonna get a motion.
Make a motion for drainage?
Second.
The first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Drainage.
Do you want to be anything else?
No, I, I believe that's it. I was just double checking. I didn't see anything else written down at the bottom.
Didn't want to cut you off.
No, you're fine. You guys have a good week.
You, too.
You, too. Thanks, Ben.
Did you get the remodeling done or your project done?
I got my wiring done. I wanna move on to plumbing.
Do a little patch south of Hardy.
Yeah. Uh, last Thursday, Blacktop Service Company, they did a patch south of Hardy for that tile that we fixed.
Oh, okay.
And, uh.
I'd like to read the others out.
The stretch east towards Rutland.
Okay, good.
They did those two. And what they did, uh, three patches on Keaton.
Pretty good.
And that approach right north of your place where we transitioned from asphalt, or concrete to asphalt.
Needs to be attached to.
So we're gonna, we're gonna grind that and try and let that approach out.
Okay.
Hopefully tomorrow.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
All right, we are in drainage. And things we have on the agenda for drainage are approved pay estimate number one to Peterson Escavation for forty thousand, five hundred dollars. And, uh, this was added because for some reason they requested it and it just never got done. I think due to the fact of the holidays and whatnot.
So you said drainage district ten, number of payment one?
Payment number one. It says enclosed. Please find the payment estimate number one for work performed to date on the above reference project by Peterson Escavation. We recommend payment to the contractor in the amount of forty thousand, five hundred dollars. If you have any questions regarding this payment estimate, please do not hesitate to contact our office. You know, it says for work done to date. And I was, he, he has dug it. He's cleaned it.
It's done.
Yeah, it hasn't leveled or picked up rocks or fixed pipe, but I, I drove out there the other day and it looked to me like, he isn't at the end of the ditch. He's very, very close. Because it stops out in the middle of the section. So, um, from what I've seen, he's done a pretty decent job, too. So they recommend payment to him. This is the first payment.
Can I, can I add on there to, to approve it for handwritten, so we can get it out to him if possible?
Oh, okay.
I'll make that motion to approve, um, forty thousand, five hundred and have it be handwritten.
I'm still worried about the train. We haven't had trucks here for years.
Where in the world's that train?
I don't, I also can't say anything.
Maybe somebody.
Good as the train goes.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Now, we have, um.
Twenty-nine.
D twenty-nine, his discussion on this, um, this involved Dave, that's why he's here. Um, after a meeting last week, I talked to Brandon Myers, because he had just done the stretch out by me, and I knew what he had submitted for that one. And, uh, so, uh, Brandon and I went up there, we went out to probe. And we probed it on one sixty-nine with the box culvert goes through. And there was like three feet of silt inside the box. We thought, wow, what the heck? This thing's really full. But if you go downstream, just a hundred yards, not even that far, downstream from the box, it's, there's no silt at all. It's hard bottom. You go upstream, a hundred yards, there's no silt. So basically, they buried that box thirty inches deep.
Oh, okay. So they buried it too deep?
They buried it plenty deep. It's, uh, gosh, it must be three eight by eights or three ten by tens. It's a, it's a big box. So it's plenty big then. That's probably why they buried it that deep. That way they could adjust it later if they wanted to make the ditch deeper. Uh, we went up by, um, Gary Jensen's place and probed it there. There's still some silt in the bottom there, uh, but there's a lot of buildup on the sides and a kind of meander through the bottom of the ditch. And then we went up and probed it at the, where the outlet or the, the head is, where the, uh, drainage pipes dump in at the blacktop. And it's clean up there. So the, the middle's got a lot of silt. He estimated the cost somewhere around thirty-five thousand to clean it. And I mentioned it with Dave, and Dave thought, well, do we need to go through the engineering cost? So maybe up to ten thousand dollars for, on a project like this. And then you take the risk that, geez, that engineer says it's gonna be fifty-five thousand dollars to do this project. Well, then it's up for.
Bits.
Bits.
And he thinks at least thirty thousand?
Thirty-five, I guess, I mean, you know, you really don't know.
I was out there yesterday.
But you look at this one here, a longer ditch, and if this is, you know, it says for work completed to date, that was thirty thousand, and it's a much longer ditch and a deeper ditch. This one's a shallow ditch.
Okay.
So that you don't spend so much time going up and down the hole.
But it looked like there was a couple of places where there might have been a little sloughing.
Yeah, there's a little bit in there, but not a lot because the ditch is so shallow. And the sloughing is coming from the, the ditch meandering.
But there's too much grass. You can't really tell for the grass. I mean, there's not a lot of water because there, we haven't had that. Up along the blacktop, that's, that's gonna have to be on one side. If there isn't that much hole there, then we wouldn't have.
Yeah, really, there was nothing. He, we went down there, probed it, 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 there's nothing there. I mean, just basically clean the sod out, the grass.
And I didn't see a whole lot of tin whistles that were, I didn't drive, physically drive, because the grass is so tall, I.
You don't, you don't wanna drive on.
No, tell my, tell my wife to come out and get me because I'm out in the middle of this section. I just went in a hole.
Yeah.
So I, I didn't drive, but I looked, you know, I looked at as many tin whistles that are hanging out.
There's a, there's a lot of them that are bad.
Are there?
Yeah. Uh, I seen three in the little bit I walked. And one of them was the size of this table and about eight foot deep. So if you were driving a pickup out there, it wouldn't be good for your pickup. What are your thoughts, Dave?
I'm, I'm comfortable with what you guys decide. I don't know this Brandon Myers, what's he do after he gets it cleaned? Does he bulldoze it and level it? Or what's he got going on here? Because that's a huge factor for the people involved.
Do they pick up the rocks? Do they?
We haven't had any issues with it.
We haven't had.
See, I don't know anything about it. I'm, I'm just, I'm asking questions here.
Yeah. The ditch he done out here, he's gonna wait till harvest is done to go in there and level it.
Uh-huh. Do you level all the doors or then?
I don't know what he has. Do you know? We'll have to ask him.
Because, you know, whatever happens, we don't want like that to happen there south of me, that guy. And he still has never leveled some of that out there. That's really a mess.
Yeah, and if you don't get it leveled up, then it really gets worse because then it starts to get the sod out.
Yeah.
So I think it's some discussion we need to have. And who can get to it is important, too, because it's dry right now. It'd be a good time to get it done.
But we are in agreement. It needs doing. And, uh, I'm, I'm gonna say go for it. I talked to Gary Jensen. He said exactly the same thing. Alan Peterson said exactly the same thing. And that affects all of us a lot, you know?
Yeah. I think a lot of the expense is gonna come from pipe repair because there is a lot of pipes in that section.
And it, some of them are really messed up. We had that out in our field. Uh, I don't know, three, four years ago, there was just a massive hole out there. That was all of a sudden, and it's broke where the tin whistle connected with the old field.
That's your iPhone. It's back into the bank.
Yeah.
It sucked a little the size of this table.
Yeah. And, uh, when a part was released, that'd be, you're gonna find a lot of that out there.
Yeah.
That stuff's old, man.
It is.
Yeah.
So.
Well, north of, north of, uh, Jensen's place, there's two new tin whistles in there. Did, did they do some repair out there recently?
Yeah, that's a, they're the next dredge north. That's on Bloody Run, right? They just put a new whistle in there, not this summer.
Right by that bridge that's embargoed.
Mm-hmm. That's the next dredge north.
All right. Well, I came down through there and it was, I saw that and I didn't, so I was one mile too nor, too far north.
Because, you know, the reason I took Brandon out there is just to get an idea, because if he was gonna say, oh, jeez, it's gonna be seventy thousand, you'd have to go through the process.
Engineer, you know?
So.
I'd take any time we can get it done, get it done right without the engineer.
Well, then we control who can do the work, because we have these projects where we get the low bid and, man, it just causes headaches.
Yeah.
Well, we got that farmer across from where Tom lives. That guy came in there and did that twenty years ago. And he just pulled that bank pipes up, pinched them off, ruined all the tile, a lot of the tile in that field, because it just, it was gone. Just.
We still wish we would put some type of post out there with a reflector on there so that you see them.
Yeah.
Because.
Well, the thing is, I think you have to wait till it's fallen, burn the ditch off to see the pipes, because they're so, the weeds are six foot tall.
Oh, it's terrible.
It's, it's awful.
That's the only that's growing. I mean, when the, when it's dry, the grass and the weeds are the only that wanna grow, so.
Water, half the iron weeds that sit there.
I don't have a problem doing it. I just wanna make sure that sometime we don't get burned. When we get a bid for roughly thirty thousand or thirty-five thousand, I don't have a problem doing that. I don't really like giving the ten thousand for the engineer to tell us that there's six inches or whatever the number is.
So are you talking with thirty-five thousand just for the clean out and.
Just for the cleaning? Yeah.
And that's not the pipe repair?
That's not the pipe repair. You know, you don't know how many pipes are out there. There's a lot of them. You can see a lot of them.
Especially in the last mile. The first mile, there's not as many.
No, but the last mile.
There's a lot of them. That water comes from a long ways there.
Well, for them two new pipes, why do they, why are those things, they're like fifteen foot out from the, and they, they're hanging out like twelve to fifteen feet.
They stick way out into the ditch, the way they put them out so.
Well, if, if the water's running full towards the fall, when it starts freezing and those things got water in them, pretty soon they start, they wanna break. I, I don't know why they're that normal breaking. Snow will come on too.
That far out. I noticed, I know that, Bruce. I've seen that.
I don't know, I guess.
And those are put in recently?
Those are, those are branded. The dirt's just fresh.
I wonder who done that work?
I don't have a clue. I haven't seen anything out there.
The pipes were laying there, and then all of a sudden they ran. I don't know anything about it.
I even went up towards the end of the drive because I thought, God, these are, it looks like they're attached somewhere up in the field.
Which ditches is on?
It's on Bloody Run.
Bloody Run.
Gary Jensen's.
Okay.
Seven?
Seven?
On the west side of the road then?
Yeah, I know, it's on the east side. It's in, I think it's in Kevin Polier's field, right?
I think so.
Yeah.
I think it goes to the, that hog site.
That's a long piece of way, buddy.
No, the hog, no, the hog site is the driveway. No, that isn't that one?
Nope. The driveway for that hog site is down at the intersection north of Gary Jensen's. This is still another quarter of a mile north. There were those pipes that were in, Bruce.
All right. I got nothing. You're gonna make me drive up there.
Yeah, I'm gonna drive up. Yeah, I'm too, I don't see that.
You see me out driving around tonight. I washed my truck yesterday and now it's raining, so. Oh, well. So is that an action item or are we?
No, I think we're just gonna put it off for discussion. And then, uh, it is Eric's territory. He's been gone on vacation somewhere. So I think we'll wait till next week to figure that out. I don't think we have a contractor available right now, anyway.
Yeah.
You guys, you have everybody's approval to just to go ahead and use your best judgment, do what needs done here and get it fixed and get it cleaned.
Yeah, okay.
Someday there will be rain coming again. We'll be moving down that ditch, so.
Okay, guys, is there anything else for drainage, guys?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Sneaker.
I talked to Gary Jensen Friday afternoon about thirteen A and the issue of the background.
Right, right.
Yeah, and he spoke with Travis. And Travis said, well, that's not their district. That's thirteen. And I was pretty sure that thirteen and forty-one were all redone into thirteen A. So I found that information this morning and it is.
Is the city?
So, yes, it is all of the city then.
So.
And.
I'll just send them a nice.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you. That, uh, this is.
I just send the information that you've located.
Yeah.
And say, this is what I found and we're willing to turn this over to you to give Gary direction as to how and what to proceed.
Yeah.
That would be.
One.
On end.
Well, what is this?
Good morning.
How are you?
Good. Nothing special, but I hadn't been in here for a while.
I've got a question for you right now.
Sure.
Come in. We got this pay estimate for you for, is that for the ditch clean out? All, all cleaned out?
It's all the.
I seen the machine. I seen the machine, it looked to me like it was at the end.
I got a level dirt, pick up rocks, I told Trish, there's, uh, well, there's thirty pipe, twenty-five on the plans, and then I found five more.
That needed to be repaired?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
You get them done this week?
Well, I sent her a text, there's, there's thirty there, there's probably a dozen on DD six from last year, still need fixed, and Travis has found twenty up on eighteen. So, yeah, we probably got five weeks of fixing pipe this fall.
Yeah, so it doesn't do much good cleaning the ditch without fixing the pipe?
Well, it, it's the most important part is cleaning the ditch, but then the pipe is right after that.
Yeah. Um, that little spur out here on ten.
Yep.
Has that been cleaned?
Nope.
I go by, I didn't think of that.
Yeah, it's, I got, well, I kinda hold off for the, let them guys get the crop out.
Oh, okay.
Um, it won't take long, um, and I gotta track back down.
Yeah.
There's, there's, uh, four structures on DD ten. I did one already, um, and I talked to Hopper, I'm not sure.
I gotta take this phone call.
That's on the plan, but either way, I'm gonna clean them. If it's not on the plan, I might wanna pay change, but it's important to get them cleaned, so I'm gonna do it either way. We did one, one was around concrete behind Ed Smith, it's a field drive. The other three are box covers on the roads, and they got that much mud in them. And the ditch is dry in between, but they're, they're just kinda holding the flow, so it's like, get that flow going again, I need to push that mud out.
You just put a mini, mini, mini skid loader in there?
The ones with flat bottom, I do. Um, the one behind Ed Smith was round, so I used my sprayer truck, three thousand gallons of water, and then I got a fire hose, just kind of a homemade pressure washer, but it's packed tight. It's, I mean, you could take a spade and just stand up in it, it's, you'd think it just would flush out, but it needs help. But it makes the difference, it's like that foot and a half, well, that's, why have that much water sitting in the ditch?
Right, yeah, if you don't clean your structures, they're like dams.
Yeah, and it's every mile. So, just kinda makes the project a little better.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I apologize, this should have been up here before, letting you know what we're at. Eric, he called me, was curious, he's on vacation.
Yeah, well, good, I've, I've been kinda watching you move along there.
Yeah, I'm close to where your territory is. But, yeah, eighteen Travis has got that branch done, that branch he did, I got an invoice on that, that's kinda spendy, but it's never been touched since it was first created.
Oh, really?
So we're talking sixty years, well, you spread that over sixty years of time with the dollar per acre ain't so bad. But that's, and that had nine pipe that were under mud, they weren't underwater, they, I mean, they had zero drainage. So that was bad, but he's coming down eighteen, he's right along the hardy blacktop now fixing slough offs, and, uh, then he takes the corner and he heads up to Mr. Trager, was, was had some issues up with the top end getting drainage. But, and then there's a, there's another spur on eighteen on the Bill Nielsen farm, and, uh, that, that hasn't been touched either. So we're, we're supposed to get that while we're.
You're gonna be there a while, then.
He's the rest of the year, but we, we do have the two machines, so we get a chance, we'll run down here, fix pipe. I'm doing something else, he'll be up there.
Yeah.
Still working on that.
Okay, good.
Well, we appreciate you guys working, the way you're working on it.
Well, I, I appreciate the work, it fits in good with us, we're, we're not going anywhere. And, uh, that's why we got the second machine, just so enough work, it, uh, needs to get done. If I let that sit another year, I'd be, I'd be upset myself as a landowner, so.
All right.
We got, we got to check through, so.
Well, thank you, guys. Yep, well, and that, with all them pipe, I get it delivered for free if I get a semi hose. So, but then it's a little more spendy to buy a whole semi full of pipe. But I'll use that, get that delivered, and then we can go fix pipe.
Okay.
Awesome.
All right, thank you, guys. If there's ever a drainage, maybe just send me a text, Trish, I can come in here, and if you got questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yeah, I just talked to you this morning, and now about the pipes.
Sure, yeah.
It was somebody I had to.
I tend to think, no, no, no talking is, is good, it's good to work, but I need to work on my, let you guys know where we're at, so.
Well, you're good, I just didn't remember how many pipes there was, I know that was a few of the.
Yeah, well, now, like, you know, I told Hopper, and then, uh, with you, but thank you.
All right.
Bye.
Just know we're not a county that deals with pinched off tiles and stuff like that. I had a guy at the auction approach me, focused on us, and he just said, well, how do you guys handle that, get a clean out? And they just pinched it off, and they said, well, there's no water coming out of it. He goes, well, I don't know, there, it's dry, why wouldn't, it'd be running when there's water. So he, I said, make sure you tell them now.
Yeah, sometimes I think they're abandoned pipes.
Right.
And then they don't fix them, and.
Yep.
And they actually are working, it's just that they're not, it's too dry anymore.
Right.
Yeah, it's been really dry, so. Always something.
Anything else, horse? Perfect.
Mostly not a drainage.
Second.
You got a first, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Well, yeah, so there's another example, who cost me the ditch.
Right.
And that was quite lengthy. So I think.
We should be okay then?
I think we're all right. That one certainly needs cleaning bad. Windpipe. Well, welcome back, Peyton. Down here in the bottom, we still got a few more things to run through. We have approved hire of Jennifer Stewart as a part-time employee in the treasurer's office. Effective August thirty-first of twenty twenty, at a rate of fifteen seventy-five per hour. Uh, I believe Jenna was saying that, um, she'll be helping out in the driver's license department. Due to, um, vacations and sick leave and thing like, things like that for the people that do take that.
And there is some training that, I mean, she just doesn't walk in and take that position.
You just can't, you know, they gotta be trained a little bit as to what to do and.
Through the states? So, I would make a motion to approve that hire for Jennifer Stewart, as part-time.
I'll second.
The first and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion in action for hazard pay for elected officials for the lost election, which is today.
That's right, at the primary, we allowed hazard pay for our election officials because we were under COVID guidelines. We still are under COVID guidelines, but I wasn't sure what your thoughts were, if you would allow hazard pay for this election today also.
Motion to approve it.
I'll second.
The first and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
What is the time for that? How late did I go today?
Till eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock?
Eight o'clock. And I believe by the time our, um, all the time goes to the fairgrounds, otherwise there's pulling places in Vode and Gilmore and Rennwick and Thor.
Is it just the cities that vote on this, or do the county people vote also?
Uh, at the pulling place, everyone will have a city ballot, you know, and some will have several city ballots, like Livermore, that's Livermore and Laverne. Gilmore would have, uh, Bradgate and Gilmore together, but everybody will have the unincorporated area also. So if you live outside the city limits, you re-vote the unincorporated ballot. If you live inside the city limits, then you vote one of those.
So, but if you're out in the rural areas, how do you know which pulling place to go to, or it doesn't matter?
You go to the same one you would always go to for elections, and then they'll have your cross ballot.
All right. All right, now I have a discussion in action on employee payroll tax.
There was some language that came through, it was supposed to take effect of September first. Um, the president has signed it about, um, reductions in, in employee payroll taxes. Um, several counties have been sending emails back and forth before this September first deadline hit, saying there were no guidelines issued on this yet, um, they were waiting for some clarifications on some things. Uh, some counties, very few said they were gonna go ahead and withhold, the majority said that they were not going to until they had some clear direction. Um, the fact being that at some point in the wording, it says that this would be paid back. So if you have an employee leave in the meantime, how are you gonna get that employee to pay back those taxes? So I did send a note off to Tim McHarden, um, he's aware of the language, um, just wanted his thought on it, and he said, there are still too many questions regarding the order, order, and we are not recommending the deferral. So I wanted to bring that to your attention, um, and maybe have you go ahead and just ratify that so that we have something to be working on our books to say, right now, we're not going to.
Do the deferral.
Do the deferral, we'll wait until we get some clearer guidelines and, and we'll go from there.
So we need to make that in the motion?
Yes, so.
Okay, I will take, I'll make the motion to, um, defer the tax payroll, uh, until we get further clarification on wording.
There we go.
I'll second.
Thank you, the first and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, authorize Sandy only to sign Iowa Workforce Development Area Five CEO Agreement.
Okay, that is the, um, agreement that I sent, um, all of you, and plus I sent it to, um, John Gaidah, um, County Attorney. He said that the language looked good. This is something that we have to do, um, per Iowa code for Iowa workforce development, um, as long as we're keeping our region, or, I'm sorry, our area, they can't say region anymore, our area. And we're area five, so we're gonna, right now, maintain just our area five. We may expand to another region or join another region, um, but we're not gonna do that until, we're gonna look into it next year. Just to get the monies that we needed, we have to do this for now. We've gone back and forth with Iowa Workforce. They've, they ratified it, and then they, or not ratified it, they said it looks good, and then when we send it in, then we have to make, tweak it. This time, we think we've got it, so.
With that, I would make the motion to allow Sandy to sign the Iowa Workforce Development Area Five CEO Agreement.
I'll second.
We have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And I guess I should have clarified why I have to sign it, um, it has to be the person that's on that, not the chairman and the other person on that board. I should have clarified that.
And I'm assuming you have a copy signing, or do you sign the copy I made?
I have, they're, they're sending me a copy.
Okay.
And then I sign it, and then once we get all back with everybody's signature on it, then they're gonna send that, and then I'll get that on for your file. Does that sound good?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
And Doug's gonna retire?
Doug is gonna retire. Yes, he's done in December, and it scares me to death.
He's been on there quite a while.
He has, and he is a wealth of information, I mean, he just, I mean, he can read something, and I'll read it and reread it, and I'm just, and he just, he just gets it.
Yeah, there's, he's on our, uh, on the, on our C, uh, CFR board, too, and just walking off into the sunset.
I know.
I don't know, how long has he been on board?
Uh, a long time. I, I, I don't, I'm, I just going from what people have talked about, but I haven't gotten an actual number, but I don't wanna see. Mike Cooper from, oh, Bill is retiring, too, and those two are on our board, so.
Oh, wow.
We're going all the, all those other, and the juvenile detention board with me also, so.
Okay, yeah.
He's a good guy.
Yeah, he is.
Yeah, he is, Mike's a great guy, yeah. So we're gonna be losing a lot of head knowledge, you know?
Yeah. Okay, approved tax levies for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one property taxes.
Okay, the tax statements went out, you have to approve the levy. This is based on what was certified to us by the cities, the schools, um, the college, um, the assessor, the hospital, the extension, all the townships, the area colleges, um, and then it's compiled, and then there's a total levy which comes, the consolidated rates come from the state, and so these all match the consolidated rates that the state has. I gave you both, uh, all of you a copy of last year's, and then a copy of this year's on top, so that if you wanted to do some comparing for your city or your, uh, off the country area or wherever you're at, you can see if they went up or down. Um, there were minor differences here and there, um, some more significant ones in, in the cities, sometimes not. So it's just a matter of, the county, actual county levy actually went down a little bit. But, uh, as we said, values went up, so that didn't make a difference there. So anyways, these will be the rates, but the treasurer will use them. We just need it approved.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve the tax levy for fiscal year twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one property taxes.
Second.
I have a first and I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Be the only aye.
I know.
Motion carries.
No one likes to.
Nobody likes taxes.
Yeah.
You got plenty of calls on it.
Yeah.
You know.
And I think, you know, keep these with you, and you can kinda compare it from last year to this year, tell them what, what, why it went up, you know?
And we like to tell them, too, it's up at the bottom of their statement, it does a comparison of, uh, your, our central community college or Ottawa Lake, and then it tells you the school, and then it tells you the county, so you can see how much each individual thing went up. But first and foremost, you should look at your values up at the top, they will tell you what your value was last year and what it is this year, and if there's a significant difference there, that's right.
That's why.
But it's still the bottom line thing.
It doesn't.
They still look at that, my wife looked at that, she goes, I thought you said they went down.
I know, I thought they came.
Okay, honey, just back up.
Just that the levy goes down for us doesn't mean that the tax, tax, the levy go down.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Mine went up, too, and, you know, just like everybody else.
Honestly, property values in our area have gone up. Because they have.
Which is a good thing.
Sales have gone up, too.
That's all they have. That's why the property values are based on sales.
Sales, yes.
That's what it's based on. They, down there in the assessor's office, that's what they do, they go through the sales of light, light tank properties, and that's how they, and if, and if they don't follow that, then the state comes in and tells you what you're gonna charge.
Then, then here.
Yeah.
They have to be within a certain percentage, I think it's even like five percent would be inaccurate.
I know, it's small.
It's a very tight percentage.
Yeah.
All right, committee reports.
Uh, I had nothing last week, other than my little drive yesterday for, um, but I would remind all of you, the mobile food pantry is tomorrow night, tomorrow afternoon. Um, I think that I called the radio station and also.
I heard it on the radio.
Called, uh, the newspaper, um, regards to, they are looking for some help tomorrow afternoon because everything has to be boxed so that it can be just walked out the door. Um, I think, uh, Dee said they were gonna start at like one o'clock, if I remember right. Um, and then the pantry starts at, or the giveaway starts at four-thirty. And it'll be at the fairgrounds to use the north gate, and then they come down along and drive by the building, and people are in there that, uh, take, according to however many people they're getting for. But four-thirty is usually, usually a quick hour is pretty much.
My five-thirty is pretty much done.
So, and depending on how much, uh, what the need is, they, it goes really fast, or sometimes you have to make a few phone calls, get some people to show up, and you hate to do that, but sometimes you call people that you know, um, different ladies that are in charge of get your people down here, so we do that, too, so. so we do that too, so that's all I have.
Okay, last Monday, August thirty-first, I had the Iowa workforce at all in the area five Zoom meeting. Um, and then Wednesday, the second, um, I went to Waterloo for CSS HR, um, to make a decision on the offer, who we are gonna offer the CEO, um, position to, and that'll be clarified when we go back to Waterloo this Wednesday. Two more, two more Waterloo trips, and that should be over. And then, um, we also had a Zoom meeting with CSS, CSS HR also, um, to do some negotiating, and that's it.
On what day was this meeting?
I'm sorry, it's the, um, third. Oh, and I forgot, on the third, I also had a homeward bound Zoom meeting also.
I can usually tell how busy Sandy is by, by sending her messages. Are you busy? Can you take a phone call? If she doesn't reply right away, I know she's in a meeting.
And yet...
I'm sorry, that's it.
Uh, Monday afternoon, I had a BA meeting, approved the claims and stuff. That's all I had.
Hi, uh, on Wednesday morning, I met with Brandon Myers out here on D twenty-nine. We, like I said, we didn't, we'll explore towards on that to decide what was up and come to that conclusion. I think we just need to do a recorder on it and clean it up. So, uh, that's about it. Ready to go, Stacey?
Um, nothing, just wondering if you had, um, contacted anybody about the cell service opening or the zoning board opening? Um, just wanted to keep that on your radar, so we could get those...
Did we get any description for the zoning?
Um, no, but I can see what's in hand.
If you could find something, I have candidate possible, but he didn't walk away from me real fast. He asked a couple of questions, like, what does it entail? I, so I, I told him I would try to get some type of description, so...
All the way down the Iowa code and... And then the only other thing was, um, Travis had sent that agreement, um, with the shelter. Didn't know if you were interested in doing anything like that for the county, or just hold on to it for a while, or... And I gave that to him last week.
They got a meeting Wednesday night, I think it is.
Okay.
Yes, Wednesday.
Looks like they're pretty much wrapping that up.
It is, getting close by.
Yeah, looked like they were hauling stuff out over the weekend for, like, all of the stuff inside. Looked like it was pretty much, I hadn't been in there, but driving by it.
And Mary Moffett passed away.
I heard that.
And before she passed away, she did send word to, her money to get T-shirts for the fundraiser ride that they talked about, and something else she's paid for.
Nothing else that they can lose to adjournment?
So...
Second? Oh, we are adjourned, yes.